Order Pastor Rod Sparrow, if you'd please lead us in the ovation.
Father, your word says that when the people, Lord, rejoice, Father, that the righteous are in rule. We thank you, Lord, for the men and the women that you have chosen to be a part of the city council. And we ask, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, guide them, lead them, direct them, Lord, so that your plans and purposes for this land shall be fulfilled. Bless this region and the people that are a part of it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Councilman Slackto, please lead us in a pledge to be honored, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Here.
Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilman Slackto.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Thank you. So Peter and Fred are busy in Tallahassee, are working on our legislative agenda. That's why they're not here tonight. Public comment, please, on agenda items? Anyone? All right. That's the first, yeah. Second call? No, all right.
Rick's not here.
Where's Rick? All right, seeing none, thank you. Counsel, I want to make a suggestion, if we take a look at the agenda. I talked to Carl this afternoon, and I thought we would move up after the consent agenda, the item of, what is it, Roman 13C, discussion of the Hurricane Irma impact on cash flow, if that's okay with you all?
Move it right after the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's Steve. Okay, thank you. So with that, on the consent agenda, anybody like to pull anything on that?
C and F.
C and F, okay. Anyone else? I'd like to pull, I'd like to pull B.
Okay, sorry.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slackto.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Okay, so approved. I just pulled B to, if Matt is here, to thank him for all his hard work. Is he even here? Matt, maybe you want to just come up and say a word or two about this?
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. This is a scope of services for design of the northern two quadrant roadways, both northeast and northwest. We built into it some flexibility for during the selection process, or if council chooses to pursue one or the other or both, so that the designer understands what we're asking them to do. But ultimately, it would allow for them to design either northeast or northwest, or vice versa, or both, should the, should the decision go that way. So it allows us to solicit input, letters of qualification, and then ultimately go through a selection process to select that design firm. So it's a major step towards the implementation of the quadrant plan.
So while we're on this topic, I'll mention that we're also bringing this to the MPO, not this particular item, but we're bringing the quadrant plan to the MPO for the December meeting. I've had two really constructive meetings with L.K. Nandom, who is the head of District One with respect to this. And I think it's fair to say he's supportive of what we're going to bring to the MPO. He's, he's working with, and his people are working with Matt, as well as John DePalmer on that, reviewing the city's presentation. So, thank you, Matt.
Mayor?
Yes?
That's the two north quadrants we're talking about?
Correct. Yeah, correct. Any comment on this one other? No, okay. I would move the matter, move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackto.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Okay, Amy, C.
Okay, I just put, drew this out for a little more explanation. I assume that this has to be integrated, because an important part of this RFP is to get an understanding of what some, a cost would be in order to mitigate the stormwater management, and that we would integrate that with our other efforts and our other studies. So what is the timing of this? How would it be integrated? That's what my question is.
Well, this is for the establishment of a system by which we would collect stormwater fees.
Right.
In order to, on an ongoing basis, annually, in order to fund ongoing stormwater mitigation and improvements throughout the city. So this is not particularly for correction of issues that we are looking for funds from the state and other locations for because of what happened in the storm. This is for ongoing efforts to maintain them once they get improved, and also to create additional improvements as required in the future. So...
So it wouldn't be...
Providing a funding source is what it is.
So how, but as a part of this, at least it was listed, that we have to evaluate what our needs are?
That's correct.
Correct.
So how are we going to do that? That's my question.
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be using the information we have across our departments that are applicable to this, in terms of future needs. And that data should be pretty close to being available, anyway.
Okay.
And we'll supply that to the consultants.
So we already have this information, so that they could just...
We think we do, yeah.
Okay, all right. Move, move the item, then.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slackto.
Motion passes. Amy?
On this, I just, I don't quite understand what we're doing here on, on the 10 firms. How do we do this?
Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. What this is, we, we've had this list. It's a list of firms of landscape architects, engineering firms. So for any future project, we already have a list that we've already reviewed. So we've already looked through all of their qualifications. We know what they can and can't do for our future needs. Eight of these 10 firms were already on our list. Those contracts all are expiring. So we went back out for letters of interest to see other firms that are out there. We did look through all of these and reviewed them, and based on all of their qualifications, there's different ones in this list that we can use for Hurricane Irma issues and repairs that we have, or any future needs.
So as a project comes up, you could just go to the list and say, could you...
We can go to the list. We don't have to go back out for RFP every single time, for just a design firm.
So they could just give an estimate or something, or do you have to bid it out?
No, we don't have to bid it out, because this was the bidding process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move the, move the issue.
I have a comment on it. I would second that discussion, which is Carl, one of the things, and Nicole, one of the things we had in the past, understandably, we haven't picked it up, there's certain things that happened around here that kept us busy, was a kind of parks design master plan. That's still something on our list, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and when that comes up, it may be one of these 10, it may be someone else, I assume.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just had, I was, as I perused this, I didn't notice that there was an, an end date. How long is these, how long is this list, or these?
The contract is for three years.
Three years, okay.
But it does have renewals.
Okay.
And that's what, we just ran out of renewals in the last one.
All right.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slackto.
Okay, motion passes. So now, if we can move up the item with respect to the cash flow, having to do with the hurricane, Anne?
Yes, so the errata sheet is automatically...
Yeah, the errata's on it, yep. Thanks, Steve. Let me start by saying thanks for all your hard work. It's obvious from the material you have given us, that you and your staff have put a lot of effort into this.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And we have been all, it's been quite a team across all departments with this, working, pulling the information together, and getting to a point where we'll have the submission to FEMA, our first package, looks like probably next week, to get the process rolling. I would like to go over, Anne Wright, Finance Director, I would like to go over PowerPoint real quick. Kind of a high level, and it has some large numbers in it, and I had distributed a lot of detail to support those large numbers, so. From a standpoint of an executive overview, it is estimated that the total damage cost to the city from Hurricane Irma will approximate $16.8 million, with $11.6 million being the cost of debris removal and related monitoring services. Needed road repairs are estimated at $3.2 million, and repairs to damages to the city parks are estimated at $2 million. Preliminary calculations, assuming no cost disallowances from FEMA, indicate potential FEMA funding towards these costs in the amount of $13.4 million. It is also expected that the state will participate, to a certain extent, in sharing the costs not funded by FEMA. I did receive confirmation from the state today indicating that was the case, other than cost sharing for private property debris removal. They will not cost share with that, but they will cost share with all the other categories of costs. Impact on cash flow, which has been a primary concern. Managing the general fund cash flow, because that is a source of funding for these damages and services on debris removal. With the debris removal wrapping up, as of yesterday, there is an immediate impact on the city's cash flow. Within the general fund, the FY 2018 budget included a budget of $6 million for hurricane expenditures, and $5.1 million in budgeted reserves. And our balance sheet is a very cash flow balance sheet, so when we, when we budget, it generally means that we have the cash for these types of items, and from a standpoint of coming into the year with, with fund balance. Coupled with the fact that the majority of the city's ad valorem taxes are collected by the end of December, which is a benefit to us from a cash flow standpoint, this indicates that the city's cash flow should cover these costs for the short term, as long as non-budgeted expenditures are not incurred and the FEMA reimbursement is not delayed. Our cash flow projections do focus on what was budgeted for the year, and anticipation of when, when the spending will occur. Preliminary cash flow projections, assuming FEMA reimbursements for the debris removal costs in the spring of 2018, show adequate cash balances remaining in the general fund. Each weekly meeting that we have with our FEMA representative, I ask her about the timeframe of when we'll be reimbursed. And at our meeting yesterday, she noticed that I was asking every meeting, and she said, "You ask me that every meeting?" I said, "I know. It's very important to us." And her answer yesterday was eight weeks after, after we file our information. And then she asked me, "Is that what she said the last time?" I said, "No, you said six to eight weeks." And she said, "Okay, six to eight weeks." But we are looking at a period of time that's shorter than, and I guess, some of the things that have occurred in the past, or that we've heard. So that's very positive. And we're on track to, to provide our information just how they want it, so that it will expedite that whole process. The cash flow from our reserves now being temporarily used to fund hurricane costs causes some concern, because we're not positioned to withstand another disaster, from a cash flow standpoint, if that would occur. So as an abundance of caution, staff does request council's guidance on some staff recommendations. First recommendation is to approve staff to bring forward a request for approval of inter-fund borrowings, if needed. These borrowings would be from the various impact fee funds that we have, and the 2011 debt service fund, where we are accumulating some cash from the rate increases that occurred last fiscal year, for the communication services tax and electricity franchise fee. So that, that's one recommendation. Second is to approve staff to move forward with positioning the city to enter into some form of a revolving line of credit agreement, subject to council's approval. What I'm asking or suggesting today, that that's something that you, in concept, would agree to us researching and bringing back to council. This would also serve as a contingency plan for emergency situations, so it would position us that if we needed the cash, and from an external source, other than from other funds, that we could move forward quickly with it. Initially, Audrey had given me some guidance, that typically, when we borrow money, we're looking at a 60-day window. And I was trying to look at something that we could facilitate doing some legwork first, to position us that if we had to, to move forward with it, it could be maybe quicker than 60 days. And the third item, council, to provide prioritization of capital projects, which are funded with the general fund. In the situation, just as a way of background, in a situation where there are multiple funding sources for projects, for instance, the quadrant plan is, is one of those projects that has multiple funding sources. Our practice is to use the most restrictive funds first. So we would spend the road impact fee funds first, and the general fund would be the last to fund a project, just so that you know that that does help preserve cash in the general fund. Other information, insurance, several damages are covered under the city's property insurance, and we are awaiting information on the amount of funding that will be provided from our insurance claim. FEMA funding, it covers the allowable damages after insurance proceeds are applied, so this will reduce the amount of the projected city-funded portion of the damages, because I didn't have any information to even project what the insurance would be. So, for instance, if we have a loss of, let's say, $100,000, and the insurance, and from that standpoint, without any insurance, and 75% FEMA reimbursement, $25,000 would be the share that we would have, and share that with the state. So our portion would be 12,500. If there's insurance of, let's say, 25,000, that brings that loss down to 75,000, and therefore reduces our 12.5% amount that we would have to pay. So the, whatever we get from insurance will benefit us, from a standpoint of reducing the city's share. Staff follow-up. We are continuing to monitor cash flow very carefully, and we'll keep council informed of that. We're diligently working with FEMA to make timely submissions for requesting the funding. The process is a multiple-step process. We actually upload all our documentation into a FEMA portal. They review it. They then provide the state with an approval to make payment to, to the city, because we are actually a sub-recipient of the state through this grant. So then we have to upload the same information to the state's portal, because they do some due diligence before they actually release the funds to us. So it's that, kind of a two-step process. But once we get everything updated to FEMA, we are uploaded, we're going to go ahead and upload it into the state portal as well. So it'll be sitting there, waiting for the state, when they're ready to look at it. Staff will focus on identifying options for council's consideration to replenish the city's reserves as quickly as possible, because as a result of this, we will have an, an impact that might be around $2 million, when we look at the total impact, that wouldn't be covered by the FEMA reimbursement or the state. And as a result of the FEMA grant funding, the city is now required to have an additional audit. And that's the audit of our federal funding. The audit is conducted in conjunction with the city's annual audit. It's referred to as a single audit, meaning at the time they do the external audit, they also audit the, the grant aspect of it. Our auditor has already been contacted regarding the requirement, and this will be an additional cost to the city. I've asked them for an estimate, and have not yet received that. And that's my kind of overview of what's been going on.
If I can make a suggestion, as we tackle this, if we can divide this at least into two parts. First, before we get to recommendations and what to do, any questions any of us have about the facts here? Questions about what's been presented, et cetera?
I just have a question of how the state partnership works. Do they just look at what, what we're, we have to absorb, and they pay half of it? Is that what?
That's correct, except for the, the debris removal of private property.
So they review the FEMA information, and then if it fits within their criteria, and they, they apply the percentage, whether that's 75, or 80, or 90?
Yeah.
And then whatever's left, they share half of it?
Yes, yes. It's been an interesting process of different percentages. The, there is a, a portion that is 100%, and that's for the emergency protective measures for the first 30 days. And the first 30 days, oddly enough, run from September 4th, because that was the planning for the hurricane. So emergency protective measures went into effect September 4th through October 3rd. For debris removal, a little bit different, too. The first 30 days for debris removal, which is reimbursable at 90%, runs September 18th, because they recognize the delay in some of the debris removal activities getting started within the state, because of other events that were going on that impacted those vendors. So that runs September 18th to October 17th. And we, our debris removal actually began around the 19th of September. So we are getting the benefit of 90%, and with it wrapping up yesterday, it fell into the next level of reimbursement of 80%. So that's above the traditional 75%, so.
Anyone else?
Steve, me, I do.
Greg?
Oh.
Okay. I just want to make sure I read it correctly, or didn't misunderstand you. But is the assumption that we're going to get the FEMA reimbursement in the spring of '18?
Yes.
How do we know that?
Based on the, the person that we've been working with. We have assigned to us a program delivery manager, and that's the person I've been asking that every, every week when we meet.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
I mean, that's the best information that, that we have on it.
And Carl, you were explaining to me this afternoon, she is actually an advocate for us?
She is. She is with FEMA, and her job is to try to streamline and get us our refunds as quickly as possible. And that's one of the reasons why she's here weekly, dealing with our staff, and getting the information she needs, asking us to make changes or get additional information as required, because she wants the package to be as complete as possible, so that we can get, we can get the money and keep it.
And it might be helpful to just share a little bit of what she said to you today about packaging, because this, to me, is of some comfort, because, you know, we've constantly heard out there, seven years, 10 years, five years, that type of thing. And this is a different world.
You're right. And, and I will tell you, I've been coming into this with the same perspective, which is just listening to the horror stories, and, and of course, worried about cash flow. I will tell you that what I have learned today, on a number of different sources, from a number of these sources, I am not as concerned about cash flow as I was when we started in to even this week. And that's a good thing. So first was the information about FEMA being able to reimburse us in about eight weeks, after submission of the packet. So the big key is to, and, and she's been honest about it, the big key is to try to get the package together, for the first 30 days at least, to get us some money, right? But to get out in front of the crowd, all right? So much as...
A restaurant.
Yeah, a restaurant situation. You know, you see a big crowd in, there's 12 people at a table. You want to get your order in first, so it's likely to come out, not be delayed. Behind all of that, it's the same, it's the same situation. So her goal is to try to get us submitted as quickly as possible, be out in front of the rest of the crowd, and try to get that money back to us in eight weeks or so, which was very promising. And she's consistent in her answer, which is good.
Just very suspicious about the other end. She may be our advocate, but it's the other end that I worry about.
Well, and it's the, if I may.
Right.
We had our meeting today with them, the same thing. And they'll get the money to the state in eight weeks. Then it's up to the state to reimburse us. That's the part that makes me nervous on it, because that's what, kind of what they told us, that we're, the way their plan goes, is it goes from FEMA in Virginia to the state of Florida, then the state says, "Okay, here you go." And what they're, how long they keep it, it's going to be their, their ballgame.
Well, I would like to think that our relationships with certain people might help.
I'm hoping. I have a couple more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where are we on the 60, obviously 60 days? Where are we at on our 60 days? Because you have up to 60 days to file.
We have 60 days to, to identify all the damages.
Right.
And our 60-day, and that was 60 days from the recovery scoping meeting. Our 60-day ends January 12th.
Okay. And then, my other question, when it talks about reimbursement for insurance, did we, or do we, I guess, have insurance on the roads and the par, I mean, obviously the parks, but none of the debris? So we're going to have to eat some of that?
None of the debris.
Okay.
Okay, none of the debris. We have insurance through the Florida League of Cities.
Okay.
Is, is where that insurance is. And we have spent hours of staff time with adjusters, multiple adjusters, coming through, doing first a preliminary check, and then a very detailed check, like spending an entire week in this area. So we've got all that work done. The information is now at the internal adjuster at FLC.
Okay.
And we talked to him as late as today, and he advised that we could expect, in two weeks, a packet that's going to give us information on any denials, probably more because we may not have hit our deductible in certain areas, but any denials, and then copies of checks that they've cut to us, that will be in the mail, following that packet.
Okay.
So that was the other good news today, was it looks like the timing on that is going to be pretty quick, and it will not be a reimbursable situation. That money will come to us upfront, even before we've done the projects.
So that relates to a lot of what's in yellow on these pages?
Right. And that is correct, because that information is critical to FEMA, because they're going to apply against the net after, the net cost after insurance proceeds.
Right, right. Two other questions. Anne, you made the comment about, about, at one point, if we have to borrow, it's going to be against, like, road impact fees and all that, first, before we hit the general fund.
That's correct.
But also, you said that if we have projects, like the quadrant study, we're going to pull out the road impact fees before we hit the general. How, is it going to be a tightrope walking type thing?
Right, right. But, but when we do that, when we're using the road impact fee, we're preserving the cash in the general.
Okay.
So it's less like...
It was kind of contradictory at the start.
I know.
It's going to be that tightrope, that's what I was trying to figure out.
It's not going to be there twice to pull.
Yeah.
Right.
The last question I have is, and I'm sure you've looked at it, what kind of negative impact with us spinning out 11 and some odd change, or almost $13 million, on the revenue side of what we projected for interest on some of these funds?
It will, it will impact it. But our interest is basically running 1%, so it's not a significant number.
That's the good news about lousy interest rates.
Unfortunately. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mike? Steve? I just had a few things. One is, Anne, on the attachment aid of the green sheet, you had the general fund, for example, at 14 million. So that's before this year's taxes flow in, is that right, from a cash flow perspective? You're not projecting...
We, we had received about a million dollars.
About a million.
In November.
So we have about another seven to come in, kind of like...
Correct.
All right, so that, we'd have a peak somewhere around 20 million dol, well, yeah, somewhere around $20 million, on the rough math.
Right.
And then it feathers out over the year, as the expense takes place. Then the other thing is, and you mentioned the number, 2 million, and I know you've been clear to say, these are estimates, you're doing the best you can on them, but that's an estimate of kind of where we might be net, after all the reimbursements from FEMA, and after all the insurance. In other words, that's, that's the number that we'd have to refresh in the emergency account.
Right, that's right. From a reserve standpoint.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing, Carl and I had several really good conversations today, and I actually called Carl in the afternoon, and I said, "I'm wondering on the debris, something." And I'll tell you what I said, Carl, but to Carl, and Carl looked into what I had to suggest, and, but he had another idea, which I think is a good one. What I said was that originally, in terms of the debris pickup, it's a Lee County responsibility. And in fact, in Astero, Lee County took care of the debris pickup there. Now, we did it on the assumption, we were hoping it was going to be a much smaller number, within that kind of sweet spot on our, on our emergency number, but we got hit much worse than anyone in the county. The result of our activities is, in effect, that we took off Lee County's back, what otherwise would have been their obligation. And I suggested to Carl, and there's, there's no, you know, nothing really much has been done on this yet, but that it... but that it might be worth having a conversation with the county, not to ask them to fill in the number after reimbursement, but with respect to the squeeze we might have for cash flow. Because that squeeze does relate to an obligation they otherwise would have had, and indeed, for other communities, carried out. So, that could help us on liquidity. Carl, after our conversation, you told me upstairs, though, some other stuff I thought that was pretty helpful in terms of liquidity facilities.
Right, so, we looked into something that we had heard about with regards to loans to governments, cities and counties in particular, for capital needs, but also in situations like this for hurricane situations, for basically either expending money on those, on the funds for, or the expenses for debris, for improving items, repairing items, whatever, again, capital expenditures. And there's, I mean, there are cities that have been with this program for over twenty-five years, and they use it and reuse it. And for example, I mean, there's going to be issuance costs, but they're only one time. So, if you were to borrow, and I'm making up a number here, ten million dollars, there'd be issuance costs for that ten million dollars. And right now, their interest rates are running about two percent. Now, a portion of that moves because it's tied to the commercial paper rates. The rest of it are fees, but it's running about two percent right now. If you borrow money and you set up, you just say, let me back up. You're not going to borrow money. Let's say you set up an account for ten million dollars. You can draw down on that as you need, and you will only pay issuance fees and interest on the money that you've actually drawn down.
That's pretty good.
So.
That's revolving.
Well, it even gets more interesting. Because let's say you borrow ten million dollars and you pay all of that back, okay? You have, you are now in the program. So, if you need to go back for other needs, like you need to fund an initiative of the council, whatever it might be, as long as it's a capital expense, you can go in and borrow that money up to the amount that you've been approved for previously with no additional issuance fees, which puts you in a better position than even a bonding position. If you were to bond.
It's zero.
It's zero for issuance fees. Obviously, you'll have to pay interest. So, it's an interesting program and may have use not only perhaps in this situation, but maybe for some of the other things the council's looking at. But that's for another day.
Term links.
Term links are basically, they've indicated, those are five-year notes, but they can, they can be increased. Yeah, you can do additional five-year term.
But for this, we'd just be using it as a liquidity facility to bridge any gap with respect to FEMA reimbursement. And it's kind of a revolver, is what it is.
Right, right.
So, I'll tell you, I would suggest, rather than get it into cuts in capital expenditures, the following. If you parse this out, there is a chunk of this that it sounds like, from what you heard today with respect to the insurance, is not going to be a cash flow issue because we're actually going to get funded in advance of the payments. So, maybe go back and recut this, assuming that, realistically assuming that.
Once we know the numbers.
Once you know the numbers. But it's a lot of what's in yellow and, all right. Then, the other, the big elephant is the debris part relating to FEMA. And I think it would be good, maybe in the meantime, between this time and our next meeting, to go back, let's have that conversation with Lee County with respect to that. And also, look into what Carl talked about in this collective of cities, which actually would be similar to what Anne is talking about, but it's as a, as a third-party revolver. But it sounds like it's more cost efficient for us, what he's suggesting. But the other thing is, I mean, I think we're going to know sooner rather than later if the world has changed for us, thanks to Anne's continued prodding and the fact that we have this advocate and what she said to Carl today as well. And we're going to know sooner rather than later at a time when we're going to be in a very high cash flow position. Luckily. Because it's going to be kind of our Christmas rush of real estate taxes coming in, putting that general fund number up to something in around twenty million dollars. It's not like this happened in July where it would be at the low point with respect to that. So, that would be my suggestion. Is that, is that fair? Well, I'd make a motion, but I want to make sure council agrees, just conceptually.
And you can check with Bank United also and see, because I know they have, they've opened up a line of credit. We just switched to them, so I know that they, we've asked them for that.
Now, I just want to point out, any borrowing, we do need to have an ordinance per our city charter. So, I'm going to work with staff on getting that.
Starting getting going.
So, we get it going, so once we have it, we plug it in, and so the money can be available pretty quickly thereafter.
And I'd like to just clarify the cost there, you know, what the underwriting cost would be. Because this is essentially a variable interest rate loan. It's different from the line of credit, which has, I assume, is that a standard two percent that you had in your?
That was an example of it.
Right. So, once you, once you took the line of credit, that interest rate would hold until you paid it off, is that true?
Yes.
So, just to compare the actual cost for what we have.
Well, we can do that, but I don't, I don't have those figures in front of me.
Oh, yeah, not now, I'm just saying.
Okay, but no, no, we will do that.
Yeah.
We will do that. And what it is, of that, let's just say it's two percent on this program I've explained.
But you said it's all in for two percent on the one you're talking about?
Well, it's, right now, it's two percent.
On the startup interest, yeah.
On the startup interest, it's two percent. But I've looked at it over time, because they gave us information on what it's been doing since 2015 and before. And those numbers have been pretty steady. You know, the high ones, the low twos. The only, probably only a twenty percent of that two percent is actually variable. The rest of it is more fixed as a fee. So, so when, so when the commercial paper rate changes, you're not looking at applying that a hundred percent to the interest rate. It's only about twenty percent of the interest rate.
So, what is, well, just give me the information on how often it changes and what it really, what the.
Changes monthly, could change monthly.
So, it's a monthly change tied to the commercial paper rates?
Yes.
And there's no maintenance fee on the revolver, and there's no maintenance fee on the line of credit.
Right, the line of credit, you have to do it every year, right? The fee to open that line of credit.
There's two different lines of credit. There's the one that she talked about, but this is.
This one is a one-time deal. You get, you get, open up the account for so much amount of money, and then you could have it until you're a bad risk or you don't want it anymore. And then, you just have to pay any interest that changes on a monthly basis for the amount that you've drawn.
Correct.
On yours, if I followed you, there's an ongoing annual fee of six to eight thousand dollars to hold up, out the draw that you can take. And then, the current interest is two hun, is two percent, and that would last until whatever the term is. Is it a term?
She gave an example of, and this is our financial advisor, like a three-year term.
So, for three years, right now, you'd get it for two percent, but it would be stable, it wouldn't change. Okay.
So.
We'll, we'll put all that together.
Yeah, we'll put both of them together.
Yes. Okay, everybody? All right, thank you.
Do we have to vote?
Thanks. Well, I don't think so, it's just a sense of council, right, Carl?
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so. If I can find my agenda. It's buried here somewhere. Yeah, thanks. Mayor and council, now, I had one, which is a follow-up on, sorry, Carl. A follow-up on the Little League and the lights. So, I believe, Greg, you went and took a look for the fire department, and what, what was the story there?
It's just, it's too hard for us to get our trucks along there without putting down plywood and doing all that. There'd be a lot more, a lot more entailed to getting those lights down than it would for like a crane or somebody else. They may be able to get in there with a smaller bucket or a man lift.
Okay. All right, so Nicole, anything?
I do, I have good news, actually. Davco Electric was the lighting company. We already, they've given us a price of thirty-two hundred dollars. And we're working with them to get their insurance and all of their information that they can get those lights down within the next week or two.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep, so as soon as we get them all sealed up with their insurance, then we'll be ready to go. They already have a crane on this side on the west coast of Florida, they're on the east coast typically. So, they're, they're ready to go as soon as they have all the information.
Nice.
Take them down, who's going to put them up?
Well, that's.
The new ones.
Well, that's my next question.
Well, that, the, getting new ones is a different story because that will be based on what the information we get from the insurance company, based on costs and things like that. Davco, of course, is a company that can do that as well. They are looking into, once they get those lights down, they do see that there may be a way that they can fix the lights instead of replacing them. But at this time, they don't want to touch them until they can get the heavy lights down. So, then they can actually dig around the, the footings of the poles to see if they can actually just be reconcreted in and straightened. And that would be at a much cheaper cost to us.
Is there a temporary lighting? I'm sorry.
The.
Temporary lighting.
That's what my next question.
Yeah, the, those two poles, we are looking and getting different quotes now on portable lighting for those two positions. The rest of the lights that are not broken can be placed up and on, working as normal.
Nice, nice.
So, it should be a lot less cost to us to do portable lighting for just those.
Two spots.
Two spots instead of all of the fields.
Okay. So, there's a chance we will be ready for January?
We, we are pretty positive thinking that we, that we will be with lights.
Wonderful.
The other issue we're running into are the backstops, that is, the twenty-five-foot fencing. We have reached out to fifteen fence companies. We have one quote back at thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So, we're looking at ways that maybe we can just make them structurally sound and fix them completely at a different time. So, that's what we're looking into now, that we can just make them structurally sound. They may not be the prettiest, but at least the fields would be playable for Little League season.
Okay, good.
It's my understanding, some of these fencing companies aren't going, taking on any more people until February.
This is correct, and that's, that's the problem we're running into. Luckily, we, we did find someone that, that did come and just give us a quote. But the rest of the companies are saying, we don't even have time to come look at, look at your property until February, March.
And in my opinion, there's some price gouging going on, too.
Possibly.
Knowing by the cages that some of the prices they're getting are unbelievable. Almost thirty thousand dollars to put a new cage up for some people.
Yeah, this is thirty-seven five for just the, the backstops. That's not, I mean, they are twenty-five feet high, it's not regular fencing, but.
Yeah.
It is a little pricey.
Greg, who's the head of the Little League, what's her name?
Beth Foreman.
Beth Foreman, have you been in touch with her?
Oh, yes, Beth and I talk regularly. She's well aware of everything that's going on.
Nice.
And, and anything, she's said anything they can do to help. And they tried to reach out to fencing companies, too, in case they had parents that worked at one of the companies to try to help us out, and we're all kind of in the same boat with that one. But staff does have a plan that, that we're hoping will work, that we can make them structurally sound, just not the most beautiful things in the world.
So, they can play.
So, they can play.
Yeah, well, thank you.
That's the plan.
That's great news.
Yep.
Yeah. On mayor and council member items, our fearless duo have been up in tally, right, Peter and Fred. And I will tell you, they, just in the last two days, they met with Ray Rodriguez, Senator Pasadomo, the House Select Committee on Hurricanes, Rep. Roushen, who represents Monroe County, Representative Al Britton with the Natural Resources Appropriations Committee, Speaker Pro Tem Nunez, and Chairman of the Hurricane Select Committee. They met with the Governor's Budget Staff, Mark Cruz, Byron Donalds, they met with him yesterday morning. Ian Eagle, who is now Majority Whip, and of course, he's the head of the Lee County delegation now. Heather Fickson-Hagan, Representative Mike Grant of Charlotte County, met with David Cruz of the Florida League of Cities, Representative Rommel of Collier County, Representative Jacobs, who's on the Hurricane Select Committee. They met with Joel Negron, who is, as you know, the President of the Senate, Representative Gruders of Sarasota Manor T., and of course, our own Matt Caldwell, who was sponsoring two of our bills. Did I say Pasadomo? They must have met with her.
Yeah, they met with her first.
First, they met with her at three o'clock on the fourth.
Yeah, I busted in.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and you were there as well, Greg? Yeah. Have they had anything? Like to add anything?
No, no, it was, it was a good meeting. I was up there on different fire department business, so I did have a chance to talk to a couple representatives for city and fire department stuff and testified on a few things. So, it was very good, very positive. Again, another whirlwind trip.
Back and forth, but you looked good yesterday after seven hours in the car.
Yeah, exactly.
Saw that Mountain Dew.
Carl, anything to add on this?
I think that's it for now, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had one other one that Carl and I have been involved with, which is the Art League's National Art Festival. And what I'm going to do, just giving everybody a heads up, I'm going to bring up a green sheet for next meeting on this. Carl and Arlene and I met with Susan Bridges, and they are tight on the following point. Their five-year contract with the city, and we remember the city solicited them to come downtown, is up in next year, at the end of next year. But the artists, vendors, whatever they're properly called, they really need to know a year and a half where they're going to be. So, in a situation like this, Arlene, I forget what the word was in the green sheet, but the green sheet that was passed in August has in it a provision where council can approve something special with respect to a special event, take it out. If there is a special circumstance, I think this is one. And I'm going to bring a green sheet forward at next meeting to approve a new contract between the city and the Art League for five years for their Bonita National Art Show. So, just want to give you a heads up, that's what I'm planning to do.
Well, on that, just at the last meeting, we discussed about the special events, that we were going to treat all special events the same.
Right.
And we weren't going any more than a year out, so.
Right, well, that'll be the discuss, I mean, I'm just trying to give people a heads up so they have time to think about it for the next meeting. To me, well, let me save it for the next meeting rather than have the discussion today. But I will tell you, in a nutshell, to me, this is something very special in the sense that not only is it needed to be acted on, this is something that the city went out and solicited and brought downtown. They weren't otherwise going downtown, they were recruited downtown. So, in my personal view, I'd like to see us stick with that sense of that, consistent with what's been put in place for traffic and traffic control and all that, so. But that would be for December twentieth. I just, twentieth, I just want to advise people I'm going to do it rather than just all of a sudden, bam, here it is. Anybody else on mayor and council member items? Okay. So, public hearing?
Yes, sir. The first item is to adopt a resolution, which would create a Bonita Springs Administrative Code for Traffic Impact Statement Guidelines for rezoning, special exceptions, and local development order applications and providing an effective date. Are you happy for your resolution, which has about a seven-page administrative code? And then attached to that is this year's traffic count report. That would not be part of the administrative code. Council saw it last city council meeting when they adopted the accompanying ordinance amending section three dash two-nine-two. And council wanted an extra day to take, an extra two-week period to take a look at it. Jay Sweet is here, if you have any technical questions.
Jay? Answer a lot of questions before we ask them.
Okay, for the record, Jay Sweet, Community Development. This is simply the administrative code to put forth some standards of how we will review traffic impact statements and to make sure that everybody's using the same data source. And the city has gone to great length now to make sure that we are using proper numbers that are verified with counts and that our methodology is consistent. I will tell you that as a test, not intended to be a test, when as Beluga Road has been processing, we had asked them to give us a traffic impact statement. They came back, and within a very small number, their numbers matched our numbers in projections and, and background. So, that made us feel very comfortable with what we're doing. And of course, that road will have a big impact by having alternative route for the eastern communities. So, but that's not really part of this, but it's just one of those things that, that was David Plumber and Associates. So, sort of independent of everything McMahon has done and the staff has done, we had a verification that we're on the right track. I'll ask any questions you have.
Counsel?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Uh, on page four, for, uh, five-point-oh-five significantly impacted intersections.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, letter C says major intersections, and this, these are the definitions, um, are directly connected to a significantly impacted roadway. So, I mean, if we're talking about the, uh, if Benita Beach Road is the impacted roadway, that means every single intersection on Benita Beach Road is considered a major intersection?
Yes and no. So, when, when you look at, um-
Cause, cause above that on B, it says within a quarter mile, but, but then the next one, you know, kinda leaves it open to where it could be, uh, you know, really anywhere on that impacted road.
Yeah, this, eh, later, uh, as part of this, you'll see there's a two percent rule. So the idea is, is that on, as you're on a major road, and you impact an intersection, and generally, you're within a quarter mile or less, um, that if you impact the intersection by more than two percent, you go to the next impacted intersection to do a study to see whether or not you're going to exceed that two percent. Um, because the, the simple, I, I'll give you, uh, an example. If the old Albertson site was to redevelop into some really big shopping center where they can land it around there, they'd have a huge impact to that intersection, but depending upon the business they had, the draw they had, they may have impact at Terry, uh, and, um, Imperial, they may have the impact at Old Forty-One and Benita Beach Road, because of the amount of tr- traffic and draw they would have. And so that's the reason we have this two percent rule that goes out, uh, and to look at what their impact on those different intersections are. It may, it may turn out that when they look at those, there isn't any, but it's, it's to make sure that we understand the total impact of what's happening.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know, cause if it was forty-one, then I mean-
It's, it's not meant to make him go-
Forty-one's a much long, you know, longer-
To keep going, keep going.
Okay, so as long as the two percent applies, then, then that's the limiting factor. Um, and then on the next page, um, six-point-oh-three, the peak season volumes. Um, it, it talks about how the counts shall be adjusted to peak season values. Um, that, that's what worries me, is like when we're adjusting them, because the off-season is getting busier every year. So, if we have like a, a static number for what we're adjusting it to, as non-season gets busier, you know, the gap is gonna be smaller, so I just-
Yes, and, and I'll explain to you the, the way that I see this working, and that is, all the numbers that we are having counted, now we have counted in peak season. So, uh, at the end of, uh, this year, for instance, we'll take all of the, the homes that were built, and we'll take them off our, our anticipated, put them in existing, and then in February and March, when FTE does all the counts for the city, which is peak season, we will take, and that'll be the new set in twenty-eighteen for those numbers to work on. That's the reason we gave these as an example here. What happens is that there are roads that we don't count, cause DOT counts them. And DOT also counts, um, peak season on certain roads, and they have a number, they have a multiplier, if you will, and, and in round numbers, it's between a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and twenty-three percent, depending which road they're on, is what peak season is on those roads. We want everything, and because our comp plan requires it to be at peak season. And also, that's the reason we allow a level service D, rather than C, to be the standard in the city, cause we are using peak season numbers, cause our season traditionally and historically has been huge. In the future, that may be something that, that will change, because it is, it is changing. It's also one of the reasons that this is in the administrative code, it's much easier to change than making it part of the land development code.
Okay. Well, and that's what I wanted to make sure, that we were actually using actual peak season numbers and not-
And, and one of the, 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 the great things, um, that the city did, the council elected to do, in the last two years, is to have FTE make these additional locations, and they are done at peak season, so we actually have some overlap that we can sort of verify the county and the, and the state to make sure that they're keeping their numbers within the numbers that, uh, that we see and that we realize are out there.
Okay. And then, um, last, on page six, um, identification, recommendation of roadway improvements. It, um, says, "Based on the, uh, analysis, the applicants shall provide recommendations." Um, are we relying solely on the applicant to come up with it? I mean, I hope that we're looking at it, too, and-
We, we, we are. We have, uh, Tom Ross, who's our traffic engineer, uh, who looks at them, and, um, will make comments, uh, and I'm gonna say, most traffic engineers are, they're probably, he agrees with. There have been some that he said, "No, I don't know where you're, where you're coming from. That doesn't work." You know, there's a turning movement here that we need to look at, and has made them go back and, and reassess, and we don't just automatically accept their designs.
Okay, so if we see, think that there's something better than what they're presenting, we're gonna-
Yes.
Suggest that, okay. All right, um, well, yeah, that's all my questions, and, um, I, I do think this is better than how we have been doing it, so, um, I'm happy with it. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve, as-
I'll second it.
As long as nobody else has any discussion.
Any other discussion? A public comment, anyone? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor O'Glenn?
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Jay. First reading in public hearing of an, of an ordinance.
I thank you.
For the record.
Tongue-tied.
Okay. I thank you. For the record, this is Audrey Vance, City Attorney, uh, City of Benita Springs. I have an affidavit of publication that I have reviewed for the ordinance. I will read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida pertaining to land development regulations necessary for golf course conversions, establishing a temporary moratorium on the processing of any applications for golf course conversions to other uses in the corporate boundaries of Benita Springs for the shorter of, uh, one, twelve months or two, the enactment of a replacement ordinance, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance, uh, and public hearing. Uh, the ordinance will be scheduled, if city council goes forward, for a public hearing on December twentieth, uh, twenty-seventeenth. The local planning agency reviewing the ordinance at its December fourteenth, uh, twenty-seventeenth meeting. As I mentioned, the affidavit of publication is legally sufficient and is available at the city clerk's office. Uh, city council requested on November first for staff to prepare an ordinance. This is an ordinance that was drafted in conjunction with Special Land Use Council, Theriak in Spain, with changes made to the first draft, um, as, uh, through that process. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Counsel? Anything? Second? Okay, public comment? No, yes, public comment allowed. Anyone? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata? Deputy Mayor O'Glenn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Audrey. Um, public comment on any city-related matter? Councilwoman Grant?
Actually, I've just talked to, uh, Matt Peeny, and it's gonna be resolved.
Oh, it's here. All kinds of good news here.
Well, yeah, but what I had was, the problem was last Friday morning, I was trying to get them to clean up the last portion of the, uh, you know, the gra- the tree debris on my property. And, uh, I was, I had a little flag out there, and six trucks came by, you know, the tandem trucks. Everyone ignored me, and I was waving and with one hand, and, and I couldn't, I had the dog in the- I, I couldn't get their attention.
Ah.
Okay, so that's one thing. Well, I understand that will be taken care of. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Uh, uh, right. And, and the second item, just, just today, last couple of days, on East Terry Street and, uh, uh, you know, uh, Imperial Parkway, they're doing some majors, uh, Mastech is doing some major work. They're, uh, I don't know what they're doing. They're doing something. But anyway, the lanes are kind of blocked out, and I'm glad the sergeant is back here. We could use a couple of deputies out there between five and seven o'clock directing traffic, helping direct traffic there on that corner. Just thought I'd mention it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Kathy?
It's light at night tonight, I'm sure.
Yeah.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, and of course, I can't let the meeting go by without talking about Holiday in the Park yesterday. If anyone watching and listening wasn't there, you really missed it. Uh, I don't know what the count was, but, uh, Laura thought it was the biggest and best ever, and it, everything just worked great. Of course, you know, uh, unsung heroes of Parks and Rec, they're always there cleaning up and keeping everything going. And the way it was laid out this time was great. They had the, um, Corvettes and the train rides down by the Lyles. In between, behind Mike's business there was the snowslide and the snow, and oh, boy, was that popular. And then we had entertainment, which started with the Village Band and went on, and the tree light, the lights. If you haven't seen the lights, go down and drive there and see them. They are just awesome, absolutely great. And of course, Laura and Patrick and Kendra, and they did a bang-up job, and those of us volunteering, gosh, it's such an upper to see families. A free event, bringing the whole family, and I mean, they just had a ball. It was just wonderful, so. Thank you very much for your contributions, for letting us have these events, and keep them coming. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Hello, Pastor?
Ann Grandell, Executive Director, Love in the Name of Christ or Love Inc. While we're a little over eighty days from the date Irma rolled through, however, we must keep in mind what a disaster season FEMA workers said, is that we have to help manage people's expectations of recovery. This will be at least a two-year process, if not longer. As many of you know, Lee County Emergency Management is coordinating recovery work with nonprofits and agencies throughout the, the county. As of last week, they reported there were two-hundred-and-twenty-four families still requesting temporary shelter assistance. However, no statistics were given as to where they were located in the county, nor does that include people who were displaced and are living in temporary situations, such as with friends or relatives. Five organizations have been designated for disaster case management for our county. Catholic Charities Disaster Recovery, Community Cooperative, Lee County Human Services, Love Inc., and the Salvation Army. Locally, a meeting was held yesterday at the Gulf Shore Life Center in order to coordinate and streamline long-term recovery efforts by nonprofits and agencies, with particular focus on Benita Springs. In attendance were representatives from Cafe of Life, Catholic Charities Disaster Recovery, Habitat for Humanity, Love Inc., including representatives from several of our partner churches, New Horizons, The Rotary, Salvation Army, The Bridge Fund, and the City of Benita Springs, as represented by Peggy Douglas, who has boots on the ground, and We Care. We shared resources and methods for collaborative efforts to increase our effectiveness, reduce overlap, and create ways to prevent any single resident from falling through the cracks. We also discussed observed gaps regarding housing repairs, including the great need for mobile home repair or replacement, as well as renters who are living in homes in which the landlord would not or could not repair. Our very generous community has provided substantial financial resources which will be available to neighbors with vetted needs. Case management and communication among these entities is extremely important, as every situation is different, and the needs are serious and varied. On the horizon, we have some encouraging moves, which we have a lot of encouraging moves tonight, haven't we? From January to April, a Christian denomination located out of state will be sending work crews of various skill levels to work in five South Florida counties, with special focus on Benita Springs. They will be working here from January through April. Their work orders will be coordinated through Catholic Charities, Love Inc., and We Care. One of the questions that some of our financial resources have is concern about whether they should pay for the repair of homes that are prone to flood. They wanna be wise with the money that they're investing in our community. Along with repair and replacement of homes, as well as household goods, is the need for emotional care, which again, the nonprofits and agencies are uniting to provide. A representative from BOAD, which is Volunteer Organizations After Disaster, which is a national nonprofit which mobilizes the community after a disaster, has offered training in how to minister to people affected by a disaster. So our city leaders, our staff, and our community volunteers have done an amazing job thus far, but we still have a lot of work ahead of us. The phase of recovery that we're now in calls for a cohesive effort to get people back into their homes and to repair the homes which have been damaged. We strongly urge you to send neighbors in need to the organizations mentioned, so that together we can arise and build.
Ann, can I ask a question? Which is, the, the two-hundred-and-twenty-four, I'm a little confused about that. Do we know who they are? We don't know who they are?
Uh, that came from Lee County Emergency Management. They, they, they don't, and that number, I believe, came from FEMA. One of the things that we're doing is we are, because of the five organizations in the county that will be doing case management-
Right.
We're going through the legalities of determining, when we get the information from FEMA, who has legal access to it to maintain confidentiality.
It's almost like a HIPAA thing.
So, yeah, exactly. It's exactly, I mean, we spent an hour and fifteen minutes discussing, we're all like-
Cause you wanna help them.
Yeah, and, and people particularly undocumented are concerned, and, you know, and like the government said, we wanna help everybody, but we have to respect the laws a lot, so. There's just a lot of nuances, which I know y'all can appreciate. We just wanna handle it with care and concern, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Back to our city attorney.
Thank you. Um, the next item is to review a resolution calling for and ordering the election for March twentieth, twenty-seventeen. Um, the green sheet was prepared by, uh, Ms. Philipack, but, uh, there's one question that we need to know in order to complete the resolution.
Uh-oh.
And that is, early voting or no early voting? Uh, that's a question we need to provide the supervisor of elections. Now, in this particular case, early voting, it would only be the city's election. It would only be in those districts where it's actually occurring.
Right.
And it would cost, I believe, seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand to mobilize, basically meaning it would be cheaper just to drive people to the pole place, or fly them back.
I think, I think with absentee ballots, I mean-
There are absentee ballots.
There's absentee ballots, there's mail ballots. Uh, the supervisor of election, when we talked to him last month, he suggested not to do it.
He suggested not to do it?
Correct.
The other thing I would add, I'm not saying we should do it, but the turnout in these, like, super-off-year elections is miniscule. I mean, Steve, when you ran, what did you, was it three-hundred-and-eighteen people voted, or something like that?
It was a little bit more than that.
Four-hundred-and-eighteen? Yeah.
It's very, not very much.
Yeah. But we do have, as you say, Mike, the mail-in.
Yeah, if they have trouble getting there on election day, with the absentee ballots and the mail-in ballots, you know, you have a while, you know, weeks to do it, so.
Right.
Uh, I'm all for this, but I just, um, have a question, which is, how, um, we were chugging along in Ja- I think we were chugging along in January, uh, for city elections, and then a few ye- two years ago, we had the primaries moved to March. And so the city elections moved from January to March. Is there a reason why we're i- in March and not in January? Or we're just following what we did last time, or anything particular guiding that?
It's, it's how we amended it in twenty-fifteen, um, and the belief is, if, when they changed it from January, the primaries-
Right.
From January to March, uh, we kept, we wanted council members to have the same amount of seats, so you didn't have somebody two months of a different count.
Well, maybe we think the primaries are gonna be in March next time, and so maybe March is gonna be the date. Revenge all the time.
We can change it back, I just don't have time for this.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting. I'm just wanna know what the thinking is that went into it.
Just, uh, to try to keep it economical, and, um, we, like I said, we could change it to anything council prefers, uh, subject to the supervisor of, of elections agreeing to that change.
Next time, so, okay. Counsel, any other questions?
No, I mean, I don't see any need to have early voting.
Okay.
Not in a district, so are they gonna have early voting at the supervisor elections office, early?
They will do whatever's required in the Florida election code. I apologize, I don't know that.
That's all right. I don't see.
Anybody else, Mike? I would move the motion.
Second.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor O'Glenn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Aye.
I have two ordinances. I'm requesting permission to advertise the first ordinance, and there's a typo in the green sheet. It's 2018, I'm not going back in time. And that is private property debris removal. So, this is a, an ordinance that I am drafting at the request of FEMA. It took us until November 15th to get on the good list for debris removal. So, we were at risk until such time. It was not fun for any of us involved in that risk moment because as we're waiting for FEMA reimbursement, we weren't sure FEMA was going to give us any money. So, or find that we were a qualified government. The ordinance creates that self-authenticating situation. And I'm begging you, please, let us adopt it.
So moved. Roll call, comment, anybody, discussion?
Well, this doesn't affect what we've done, because we have authenticated it through the process, right?
That's correct. I wrote about, I probably spent twenty, thirty hours on that issue alone, let alone the rest of staff.
Good work.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta. Deputy Mayor O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karambo.
Aye.
Audrey, yep.
Thank you. The next ordinance is again a permission to advertise. Now, this ordinance, I will schedule, if it's approved, December 20th and January 3rd, 2018. This ordinance is on a rush. The Florida Legislature last year made modifications to the communications in the public right-of-way. And this is the one, and we talked about it in February or March, that they were intending to do some strange things. People are allowed to put things in our right-of-way, unless you have an ordinance and you provide a non-discriminatory ordinance. Due to the non-discriminatory is probably the reason why it is so long. It was worked on by special outside counsel. Aside from the fact, I refer to this as a member of our Public Works Department Relief Act because he's always dealing with issues of people going in the right-of-way who are not registered, who do not have adequate insurance. They just go in and surprise, he discovers people working in the right-of-ways. And he worries about safety and health and everything else. So, it is very much needed for our Public Works Department. And I'm requesting that we schedule this one immediately. It's not a land use ordinance, December 20th for our first reading, and January 3rd, at which time Terrell Arline will be here. And he'll be able to explain the ordinance to you.
So move.
Further detail.
Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karambo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Aye.
Audrey, you done?
The only other thing is I have in the room tonight Carly Sanseverina. She just started with me. She's my Assistant City Attorney. She'll be doing much of the same work that I've had the assistant assigned, but she'll be working on this public right-of-way with the permits, the applications, and getting Public Works online and learning how to do this.
Well, welcome, Carly.
Welcome.
Would you like to say anything, or are you? That's good, thank you. Great to have you here. So, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Review of the monthly financial reports that are submitted for any questions, as well as the Capital Projects Report next. Any questions on those? Okay, awesome. And we've already moved Item C up and taken care of that. We appreciate that. I just want to take an opportunity, and Arlene, I think, has got an item, but I just want to kind of reiterate what Kathy said. We're so proud of the communications staff and Laura and Kendra, Patrick and Addison, as well as the maintenance team from Parks and Rec. Could not do these projects without our volunteers. Could not do it. And of course, we have our Special Events Committee that's involved as well. So, we thank them all for a great event. This is, this is always, kind of for me personally, this is, this is the start of the season, is, is to participate in, in that event last night. So, Holiday in the Park, great event. We thank all our employees for their involvement. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
And if I may add on, Nicole, I hope, and I know you do, share this with your staff. They are just absolutely marvelous. They don't, we just don't give them enough credit.
Thank you. Carl, I have a quick question, just any reflections on Pastor Grandell's point in terms of the city's involvement? Or how is the city participating in that? I know it's mostly a private...
Yeah, well, we, we are participating in it. Peggy Douglas out of Neighborhood Services is our representative. And she is used to working with those groups. And is, she's probably closer to the neighborhoods than a lot of folks on our staff.
Okay.
So, we think she's the one to do it. We, obviously, and I know a number of the people on that group, including the pastor, and, you know, if, if they need additional support, you know, we're certainly going to be ready for them. Okay? So...
Thank you.
Additionally, when we are made aware of special circumstances, and, and in fact, I have, I've had two cases this week of special circumstances of folks in need. We've directed them to, to Love Inc., as well as the Benita Springs Assistance Office. And the two of them are also working in conjunction to make that, sure that resources are properly distributed between all the organizations. So, we actually have two cases that we forwarded to them this week, or last week, end of last week.
Great, thank you.
And then, you had another item?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
You're right.
The mayor has asked me to bring forward an item for you all. And actually, we gave you, I gave you a copy of a, a property tax ID page for a property on Goodwin Street, as well as a photograph of the house. He's asked me to provide a report back to the city council as an outreach from a member of the Historic Preservation Board, Alan Glazier, who had reached out to him. There is a property on Goodwin Street, which is 10730. The property is approximately built in 1935. It is not on the city's register of historic places, but it has been identified by the Historic Preservation Board as something of potential for, to look into further, and also is listed on the demolition delay ordinance. The property owner filed a permit for demolition on August 28th. By August 30th, the Historic Preservation Board was made aware. Since then, there were two separate conversations with the private, with the private property owner, by community development staff, as well as the former Assistant City Attorney, regarding the ordinance, the procedure, and also any opportunities for preservation that we currently have available through the city's process, the link of contractors who are approved to work with historic properties, and other resources. We also were working to hold a special meeting to discuss that with the board, and also to fast-track any waiver, which is an ability of a property owner to waive the 90-day delay process. We were then notified verbally by the property owner that they did not wish to move forward with a meeting or a waiver. They just wished to have the ordinance work as it is set up to work 90 days, which would have the 90-day period expiring on November 26th. City staff brought up this item, just as a reminder, to the Historic Preservation Board at their October meeting, as well as their November meeting. During that time, Mr. Glazier did call staff. He did ask, he had thought he had a, well, he stated that he had identified city-owned property that he felt that the, that the structure could be relocated to. I asked him to bring that up during the Historic Preservation Board meeting so that the board could discuss this item. The board did have a discussion at their last meeting. We did explain to staff that if we were to look at any city-owned property, it would be a recommendation by the Historic Board to city council. We would also need to do due diligence on any city-owned lots to determine why we had them in our inventory. Are they part of a road project? Is there stormwater utilities associated with them? Are they planned for future park, future recreational trail? So, we would have to do due diligence on that. And we asked them to be considerate because there would be a lot of departments involved in that review. There would be Parks and Recreation possibly involved in that review, Public Works, making sure that we're looking at every aspect of that property. It would not be something we could provide very quickly. We wanted to make sure we had a full analysis of. The board had general discussion on this, but they took no action or movement, or asked staff, did not ask staff move forward on that right now. They felt it was an interesting idea, appreciated the out-of-the-box thinking. But the discussion of the board was that the, the ordinance had properly been followed, the applicant had been notified, and that we were at the 90-day pass. So, the application has moved forward. There has been issued a demolition permit. I did go by the structure today. It is still standing. It's still there today. The concern that was raised by Mr. Glazier is that he compared it similar to the water tower, that should we not do something, it will be lost. But the board has had meetings and has had several meetings on it. So, the mayor asked me to bring this to your, the board, the city council's attention this evening. And then we leave it at your discussion.
Counsel, anyone?
So, everything basically is kosher?
The process has been followed. The private property owner has stated that he'd not like to move forward with any meetings of the Historic Board or, or any preservation process for the property. And so, the demolition permit has been issued on 11/29.
Got you. Anyone else?
I just want to comment that I think it's important to recognize that the Historic Preservation Board did not come forth with any recommendation here. So, I don't know whether we could, other than to be aware of what's happened, and to recognize how that demolition delay resolution is working. And the property, that's, we wanted to give the property owner an opportunity to react to that thing. And I don't see how, you know, he's following all the, we are all following the resolution. So, I think that's, that's the way it is.
Yeah, the, the 90-day delay was, you know, so it could be, we could, they could either find somebody to
Right.
move it and, you know, redo it or document it, you know, so that way they can have pictures of what it was and, you know, floor plans, things like that. And, but ultimately, if there's not somebody that wants to take the property and do something with it, it's not something, you know, the city's going to pay for to, you know, rehab and move somewhere, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more item.
Yeah, sure.
Under the category of be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
John Dolmer has a presentation for you.
And he's got sex on here tonight, yeah.
We're not getting any younger, Mr. Mayor.
College professor?
Yeah, need glasses to read.
It's, uh, it, well, it's gotten to that point, so. We are presenting to you tonight, not for discussion, but for the beginning of review, is the downtown white paper. I'm sure that all of you remember during...
It's supposed to be one page.
It's white paper, not papers.
I can take the first page out and deliver. Earlier this year, we had a workshop on downtown. And out of that workshop was a, what I'll call a litany of items that this council had requested research be performed. And over the next couple of months, I will call this the Kitchen Sink Report, where we threw in as much as we could. So, what you're going to read, I will not call a white paper in the purest sense, but what we've tried to do is address each of those items you've identified to the best of our abilities, based upon your criteria. The only area I think you might find that we were going to provide more information, but it was an item on your agenda tonight, citywide, was the stormwater utility. And I didn't want to confuse or cross streams with that particular item because I know that you're going to be discussing it going forward separately. We can always include that in presentations and anything we do. However, when you read this and you wonder why that section is not longer, there is a reason behind that.
It looks like you did enough work for now, from my perspective. But, but I would say this, that I'm glad you mentioned that because we've talked about that from time to time, which is, we poured a lot of money into that. And the question is, how could you recoup that? That's in effect its own mini stormwater utility project.
Yes, sir. It is. We, we covered a small section.
Okay.
Not as much as if the city council had not addressed this
Right.
from a larger perspective. So, what you'll see is the smaller binder is your study. The larger binder is the appendices. That includes the major studies that have been done for Old 41, plus ordinances that have addressed uses, development standards, colors, anything else we could find for downtown. So, we look forward to having a discussion with you on the 18th of December, where we can go through this in a little more detail. And if you have any questions, that will be the time that you can...
What time of day is that? Do you know offhand?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Well, and you mean December of 2018, right? So, we have time to read all this?
Whatever you prefer. There, there will not be a quiz tonight.
Merry Christmas, Mike.
Little holiday reading.
Thank you all very much, and...
Any, anyone else have any questions?
No, not on that. Thanks, John, and great job to your team.
Yeah, no, seriously, seriously, great. Did a lot of work.
There are some professors on our staff. We weighed this, and we feel we deserve an A.
I'll reserve mine, thanks, so I'll have to read it. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Let me suggest, while we're on the City Managers' Report, I mean, I could do this as a council member item, but it really is, I'd like Arlene and Matt to talk about it. We had, they had, we had a great day yesterday with Alta. Alta Design was here and spent the day on Terry Street, had meetings in 118. But, Arlene and Matt, why don't you chat about it? I thought it was a very exciting day for, yeah.
We'll have Matt fill in about the public participation portion.
Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. We, we did, basically spent the entire day with the folks from Alta, as well as their, their design engineer that's part of the, the team. It was five folks, I believe, from the consultant. We, we met in the morning with Councilman O'Flynn, myself, Arlene, Sean Gibbons from Community Development, who chairs up the city's Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, and talked about the corridor. They had collected some information from, from my department and as well as others regarding kind of existing infrastructure, existing conditions. And so, we, we started to talk about, you know, what the expectations were, the scope, what some of the key concerns are, who, who some of the stakeholders will be throughout the corridor, what efforts had, had led to this within the community. And then, really, the rubber kind of met the road or the multi-use path. In the, in the early, early, I guess mid-morning, we walked the corridor with, with the internal folks to the organization, the entire corridor, broke for lunch, and then actually came back and met with some stakeholder groups, folks from the Benita Bay Bicycle Club, the Pelican Lanning Bicycle Club, members of our bicycle, or a member of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. And then we walked the, am I missing anyone? Am I, I can't remember the names or else I'd name every individual. But we, we got some really constructive feedback for about an hour, kind of sitting around in, outdoors, talking about what some of the expectations are for that project, who some of the users are, who some of the user groups were that were overtly represented, what, how they used the corridor, as well as other facilities within the city. And, and then we talked about, you know, who else, who else needs to be incorporated and thought about in the, the needs of, of that corridor specifically. Then we took that group of folks and then walked the corridor, or a portion of the corridor as well. And, you know, walking that corridor, it really struck, well, it's something, if, if you haven't done it, you probably don't know. I bet Councilman Gibson does know. That corridor really serves just about everybody you could in terms of a multi-use, shared-use, complete-street network. It's not a complete-street right now, you know, but the, the hope is that with this project, we'll really be able to, to, to build something that's meaningful. And the consultants, every time I met with them, and this time included, have really been taken aback by the, the different users that are on the trail, the different times of day that, that you see them. You know, while we were out there, there were people road biking on Terry Street, recreationally biking on, on the corridor, walking their dogs, walking to work. I don't think we had any school kids because we weren't there right at that time, but, but they were, the evidence of them. And then people using it as a, as an honest-to-God viable option away from motorized traffic. So, so going from point A to point B. All those users were apparent just, just in the one day. And so, it's, I think it's going to be exciting. The consultants are excited, the user group, the stakeholder groups, which will continue to expand, you know, as well as people along the corridor. I think this is going to be a wonderful opportunity for the city, so it's a positive meeting.
I will add, one of the things that they did also mention is they were extremely surprised about the amount of usage, the different users, but the, it's a highly-used corridor. And we actually did witness two folks riding their bicycle back home from work. They had their workout, uh, uniform on and were on their bicycle from work. So, they thought that was also indicative of, of the use we're experiencing. So, we were able to get a lot of feedback from the folks who, very constructive feedback, folks who have ride it literally every day, were able to talk with us. What the consultant will be doing at this point is, they have data maps and points of how they're segmenting the potential trail. They will be identifying for us stakeholders, folks that they would like... They will be identifying for us stakeholders, folks that they would like to reach out to, both residential and commercial, any commercially affected properties. And then, they will be working with us to set up individual meetings or correspondence with those stakeholders prior to any public workshop so that they are fully informed of the process, able to provide input in the process and discuss any recommendations that they see. They will be reaching out to the school, absolutely. One of the things they identified was that the bicycle parking was tremendous and that it was insufficient in their mind for what should be there as, as making it at ease for the students to get in and out properly. So, they might have some recommendations on that. That would be future projects, either with the school board, donations, public donations, or projects identified. We'll be providing different phases and things we can look at as, as segmenting out costs. And also, we'll be looking at a potential, the potential pocket park or linear park that we have, the lands donated to us from the Alagold Properties. If you recall, there was land donated to us. We'll be looking at what we call a trailhead or a, a, a resting, a refuge location. We'll be looking at what proper facilities might be needed there, maybe a fix-it station which would allow tools for people who need to repair bikes as well as watering and coolers and, and for dogs, cooler water. So, they'll be giving back suggestions on what could be there. And we'll be keeping the, the folks who donate that property to us involved and keeping them a part of the process. We would then be looking at some point in February for a public workshop to be held for the stakeholders to also be invited to as well as the general public to give us feedback. And then, looking at the first meeting in City Council of March, I think it's March seventh, for a presentation to council with their ideas of the first round. We did make it clear that we have grant funds from both Community Development Block Grant and Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Trails Program. We're hoping to have sooner than later, within the next twelve months, able to begin construction and move forward so we're in compliance with our grants. So, we made those deadlines clear and they seemed that those were very achievable by the consultant.
Counsel, any questions? Great job by Arlene and Matt, and thank, thank you very much. So, now, we're on to mayor and council member items. Amy?
I have a couple. I'll start out with some fun, a fun time I had at the Horizon Council, which is, seems like it's a oxymoron, but anyway, they had as a, as a speaker, the, the new Tigers manager, Ron Grundenhire from, you know, the Detroit Tigers manager. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a baseball fan, so it was really interesting for me. And first of all, he lives, he has a home in Fort Myers-
I was gonna ask, what's he doing there? Because they're up in Lakeland, yeah.
Yeah, no, he has, he has a home in Fort Myers, but it was just, he had an inspiring talk. And for me, it was, it's somewhat applicable to life in a way because baseball is changing from, you know, the old-fashioned baseball to a technical way to play the game. And that's basically what we're doing in, in other things in life. So, I thought that was a great experience for me. And I just want to follow up on the biking thing because I did attend a meeting that was held at Pelican Landing of stakeholders, of people who were interested in getting up a group of advocacy for, for bike, biking entities. And it was an outgrowth of the unfortunate accident that happened along Imperial Boulevard. So, there's, it's a, it's, it's a very dynamic group and, and I would like to continue my approach to this, which is kind of different from the infrastructure approach that we have in, in the city, but to, to focus more on a process kind of, of issues, like for example, one of the things that came out of it, how important was for maintenance along the bike routes. And that group did provide me some typical routes that all these bikers use all over the multiple jurisdictions that we see. And I'd like to get together with staff, if everybody agrees with me, to see if we can coordinate and really understand how the maintenance is done, not only in Benita Springs, but in other jurisdictions. And then, to try to commit to, to doing a better job because obviously, I mean, the, all the biking people agreed that that was something that had to be done. And anything else that comes out of this group, and actually, I'm, I plan on attend, attending the December twelfth Bike Committee and I, well, Mike Gibson is the, is the liaison for that. But I did ask, I hope you agree, Debbie, to notice that so that I could go there too and in case we have something to say there, we don't get in trouble with the Sunshine Law. And that's December eighteenth and I-
Twelve, sorry, thank you.
So, is it still on? They didn't cancel it, did they?
It hasn't been canceled now, no.
Okay. All right. But anyway, there, there's, there's gonna be some representatives from this advocacy group that's just starting out going to that meeting. And I just wanted to tell them what the people are thinking about and, and sort of the direction. And, and I'd like to get together with Sean and all this other stuff because I'm just, I'm a, I call, I'm one of these inside bikers and they have names for all kinds of different kinds of bikers, which means that I like to stay within the gates because I'm afraid to go out on the roads. And so, I need to have an education about some of these other things that the, that the more racing-type bikers experience. And again, to follow up on the suggestion that Councilman O'Flynn had mentioned at our last meeting that to work towards what's called Vision Zero, to really understand what that means, that's been adopted not only in Sweden but also in New York City. And, I mean, it could, you could go on and on, but it's sort of the soft answer to this. It's not building, it's just procedurally, might be coordinating effort, it might be a lot of education, a lot more than we do. It's, it could be a lot of things, but I, I'd be glad to spearhead that if everybody agrees with it, but that-
Yeah, that's great.
You know, work with Mike who's the liaison to that. I don't know how much our city committee wants to do, but there's an outside group that is getting very active there, so I want to report on that. Another thing I want to comment on, and I think we all got an email from Barbara Cray in, in regard to trying to get parking permits going in, you know, what is that, Barefoot Beach or, and I think, I think Councilman O'Flynn commented on this and we, we have information from his discussion with one of the representatives from Collier County. But coincidentally, Audrey sent us an update on some new legislation and, which mentioned that now the tourist tax can be used for transit projects, all right? You just sent it to us.
The Attorney General opinion, yes, ma'am.
All right, opinion, so. And, and I was also intrigued by what's happening in Collier County where they have a bus route that goes along the, the beaches and makes kind of a circle, joined with our discussion about the bus route that we're losing along our beach. So, all these things seem to be coming together in a way that we might be able to, to develop an initiative. And I just want to throw it out to the councils to, to see if we could somehow marry all these things to try to get a really efficient and useful transportation system that handles in-season the beach traffic, you know?
Well, I agree with you, but one thing I would say is just like Collier is doing that and Lee is doing the same thing up in Fort Myers Beach, I think it would be great if we could come up with ideas, but Lee County is clearly the one that ought to be paying for it and putting it in place.
Oh, I totally agree, but we have to, this is why I said that we could, we need to, we need to get a, a proposal. We have to figure out how, what we want to ask for.
Right.
But if Collier County can do it to Barefoot Beach, to Wiggins Pass, we could do it from Barefoot Beach up to Lover's Key or wherever we want to go up there.
Well, do you want to take the lead on that?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'll be before that.
You know.
Counsel?
Is that okay? I mean, do you think it's a crazy idea or?
No, I think it's a great idea and, and we're allowed to send factual information around.
Well, I have to do homework.
So, well, I will tell you, I mean, at the MPO, the last MPO meeting, there was kind of a celebratory moment where, and it was a great moment, when the Lee dot people talked about, pretty soon what was gonna be completed was a parking structure that they had paid for it together with F dot funds on Summerlin to be able to have better beach shuttle access to Fort Myers Beach. This is like shortly after we had a deal with our route, one route being cut. It's a five million dollar project up on Fort Myers Beach, paid for by Lee County. So, to me, that's something to try to emulate. And I think time is going by because, in other words, we, we gotta find a spot.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I think it's a great idea.
Has anybody talked to the county about the, about the-
Carl? About the bus route?
The return route from, you know, Adam Botena's place.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, you, well, go ahead.
And I suppose nothing else is gonna happen, right?
Well, the, the answer is that, and I received confirmation yet today, so the cost of putting that route back on, that portion of the route, the route's not been eliminated, it's just a portion of it.
That, that bus.
So, it would cost six, about sixty-four thousand dollars.
Right, that's what you said last night.
Okay, and that's the total cost. Historically, the county has budgeted for and paid for half of that. Okay, so that our expense for that portion of that route would be about thirty-two thousand a year. So, when that was taken away, we saved thirty-two thousand dollars and so did the county. The gross amount to put it back on is sixty-four thousand dollars or sixty-six thousand dollars, somewhere in that range, and they are not in a position to pay fifty percent. They say it's not budgeted and they would not expect to address that again until budget time next year.
It'd be kind of difficult for us too with the, the cost of the debris and all that kind of stuff, but I, I know it's a good thing to do, but financially, it could hurt us.
Whatever council wants to do, I, you know, it's-
Well, I think, you know, I planned to have a conversation with Commissioner Keiker and he definitely wanted to get together, but he was unable to because of a personal thing, which is totally understandable. He owes, so to speak, owes me a call, so I'll give him a ring. But I do think this bigger project is very important that you're talking about.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, and I still think that if we're gonna spend thirty-two thousand dollars, we could just have Uber pick them up, you know, on a demand basis. Give them a voucher for it.
Just for fun, I know you got stuff you're doing, Carl, because we always kind of say that, why don't you look into it and see?
Actually, there have been municipalities that have done something with Uber like that, where, where they kind of defrayed the cost for the, the people using Uber.
I mean, we'd have to give them a voucher because we couldn't provide-
Yeah, you can't do it for everybody.
A liability and all that stuff, but anyway.
Well, maybe that, you know, who knows?
We'd be happy to look at that.
All right. Maybe, well, you have the numbers somewhere, right, for the usage on that bus?
Yes, right.
Yeah. And you know one particular business that has it. I've heard from Adam that there are, you know, maids, so to speak, on the beach that were relying on it as well. Maybe he might have some information about that. What was the thing that Tiffany Esposito was working with?
It's Chariot.
It's Chariot.
It's in Tampa, right?
It's, it's through the Tampa Department of Transportation and it, it's, they just rolled out, it's an autonomous, or it works with your-
Oh, my God.
Not completely autonomous, it works with, it's a message through your phone system and they just rolled out the vehicle about two weeks ago. So, it's, it's a test that they're seeing of how it works with the Florida Department of Transportation as well to see if it can be-
Is there any chance we could get a test down here since we're not really being really particularly well-looked after in terms of this issue, do you think? Maybe chat with her?
I mean, we can.
Chat with Tiffany?
It's for, is for an autonomous vehicle?
No.
No, it's just for a ride share.
Ride share.
A ride, demanding ride share and it works through your app.
Through your phone.
That's kind of what you're talking about with Uber.
Well, that's what Uber is basically, you know?
It's called Chariot and so it's, it's a smaller, smaller vans material, you know, smaller vehicles. And then, it works based, very similar to Uber. You can see where they are on a map, on your phone and app and, but you've been, the recipients of the program have been vetted through a needs assessment and then they're given some sort of ability to-
Well, is it worthwhile, at least having a chat with Tiffany and just seeing? Yeah. But do the Uber thing too?
Sure. And you'll be able to meet with Keiker during different-
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah. Greg?
Just a couple of things, just a reminder to everybody that we're headed to Ruskin tomorrow morning for a ten-thirty meeting for our, I think it's the last, I think it's the final step of our storm ready.
It is. We will be receiving the certificate in spring. This is the final portion of that and we've already been, Councilmember DeWitt's been actually notified by NBC Two that they would like to do a story once we become certified as well. So, they'll be looking for an interview.
And then, the other thing I have is on, just to give you guys a heads up, on the twelfth, I've been contacted by the Estero High School Environmental Club. Been working towards preparation of municipal legislation regarding development and zoning, specifically new developments. Their focus is, is raising a minimum height on ground surface to three feet. And it's something that their environmental club, and they want to do it through a legislative thing, as their little club, and they wanted, they asked me to come in and talk to them and listen to it. And I was gonna bring it back to Audrey and go over it with John and stuff like that.
Nice.
So, that's on the tw, on the twelfth.
Yeah.
On the twelfth, so I'll report back at our next meeting what it came, what we came out with, but it's at the high school reaching out. It's, it's nice to see that, you know, high schoolers and the environmental clubs taking a vested interest on the flooding that's happening beneath Estero and what they can do about it legislatively.
How do they get to three feet, three feet above?
That's just what they, that's what they come up, that's surface, raise it surface area, three feet minimum for any structure. So, and pour drainage, so they're gonna look at the drainage side of it and also the minimum height on buildings, so. That was kind of neat, they reached out to us.
Stephen?
I'm just curious, when is Lee Government Days this year or next year?
We don't, we've not set one this year. The chamber is not going. So, I, I thought that the direction was we were going to go up individually as needed throughout this session.
Which we're doing.
So, we're not gonna do, which we, we've already started, obviously.
Not as a group.
No, we're, we're not going as a group. We're going up as needed. Yep.
On that note, just real quick, I will be up there the sixteenth and seventeenth and I'll let Carol know that, so.
Great.
If we need anything, I'll be up there.
Great.
If I need to go a day early, it's not a big deal.
Sixteenth or seventeenth of this month?
Uh, no, of, I'm sorry, of January.
January, okay.
I have a commitment up there on the seventeenth, but I can go up at the fifteenth or the sixteenth early, so.
Michael?
No, not much, just, sorry, I missed the introduction last night.
What happened, your air conditioner broke?
Yeah, yeah, the AC died, so I had to run home yesterday. But I, I did make it back for the very end and I was surprised there was still a lot of people there, you know, at eight o'clock, so. Looked like it was a good event.
Yeah, I have to apologize too. I got there a little, just after the tree was lit. I made it about, what was it, Carl, six-three, Coral seven? I was on my way back from Tallahassee, came straight there, so I apologize.
It was a great event. It's just wonderful to see all the families.
It was. It was breathtaking when I showed up. Snow was going and it was beautiful.
Snowing.
I like the snow.
Yeah. I had a few things. One is the boat parade is this second, Saturday in December, Saturday night. Also, Nick Bezos and I met with Senator Benacquista to talk about Sun Trail, and she was very, very helpful to us and we appreciate that. Last thing, I just wanted to mention some facts and I've talked about this from time to time, but Ann was kind enough to compile for me information about the yearly tax bill that property taxpayers in Benita Springs pay. And we all know our percentage is five percent, yeah, very small. But the raw numbers are very interesting. So, if you take, now, these are all numbers that Benita Springs property taxers, taxpayers pay. This is only Benita Springs. Forty-six million dollars to, so for context, eight million dollars to the city this year. Forty-six million dollars to the county. So, over ten years, we're on track to pay almost a half a billion dollars in taxes to Lee County. Not that they don't provide services, but when we think about stuff like bike routes and thirty-two thousand dollars on-
Bus route.
On a bus route, it's interesting that, you know, over ten years, Benita Springs taxpayers will be paying a half a billion dollars to Lee County. The school system, which we love and we work with, and we're many, many children in Benita Springs that attend public schools, so obviously, a lot of services are being provided. That number is sixty-six million dollars a year. So, over ten years, it's close to two-thirds of a billion dollars from Benita Springs property taxpayers to our really great Lee County School District. dollars from Benita Springs property taxpayers to, uh, uh, our really great, uh, Lee County School District. And then we have other districts as well, including, uh, the Water Management District, which, uh, we pay three taxes to a year. And if you add that up, uh, from, once again, Benita Springs taxpayers, uh, adding the three, which are straight to the district, and then separate tariffs to them as well, for Okeechobee Basin and, um, Everglades restoration, is three million dollars a year to the Water Management District. So I just thought those were, um, interesting statistics, uh, to keep in mind. And that's all I had. Um, anything else from council? Uh, we had approval of the minutes, two sets of meetings, uh, minutes, any, uh-
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slaydough?
Okay. Public comment? Seeing none.
My goodness.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Congratulations, the earlys.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Good job.